Good evening, friend.
I do not have my virtual background, so.
If you just don't turn on that fan, you'll be okay. Hi Nancy.
Hi, we're having a few technical difficulties here in the council chamber, so it might be a moment or two before we begin.
We are gonna start the recording.
All right, good evening. We will call the meeting for February 7th, 2022 to order. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Sean, if you would please co-roll.
Deputy Mayor J. Raj.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baggett. Councilmember Baggett.
Where did he go?
I'm not sure, we'll come back.
There he is, there he is, he's coming back.
Councilmember Baggett, can you?
I'm here, I'm here, yeah.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Malling?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I believe she's excused tonight. All right, thank you for waiting for us and your patience through all of our technical challenges tonight. Some nights are just like that. So we will begin. Let's see, we do have one proclamation this evening. And that is for Black History Month. And so let me read the proclamation. Whereas Black History Month, established in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson, is celebrated every February in recognition of achievements by Black Americans and all people of African descent in the United States to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience. Whereas Black Americans have played a significant role in the history of our nation, and because of their determination, hard work, and perseverance made valuable and long-lasting contributions in the economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development of our country. And whereas the 2022 national theme for the observance is Black health and wellness, and recognizes that Black communities have been disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and the compounding effects of systemic racism. Whereas the city of Auburn acknowledges this country's long history of forced enslavement and institutional and structural racism, and encourages all Americans to reflect on our collective history of slavery and oppression of Black people and recommit to prioritizing racial equity, inclusion, and belonging in our city. And whereas in July 2019, Auburn City Council passed Resolution Number 5427, committing to eliminate systemic causes of disparities, racial and otherwise, in the city of Auburn, promote inclusion, and create opportunities for full participation for every resident and business in the city of Auburn, and to reduce and eventually eliminate disparities of outcomes in our community. Now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, Washington, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as Black History Month in our city. And though we celebrate Black History Month in February, we affirm that Black history is American history and recognize it as an ever-present part of our collective experience that we must encourage all residents to reflect on as we continue to pursue liberty, justice, and equality for all. Dated the 7th day of February 2022. All right. Next on the agenda are appointments. This evening, we have several appointments to boards and commissions. This one is the City Council to approve the following appointments to boards and commissions for three-year terms expiring December 31st, 2024. Human Services Committee Suzanne Pack and Erica Tomas. Planning Commission Hanon Emmer, Julie Berry, and Kent Sprague. And Transportation Advisory Board Emanuel Dolo, Citizen at Large Position. Do we have a motion?
I move to appoint as noted.
Thank you, Councilmember Deputy Mayor J. Raj.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Baldwin, would you care to speak to your motion?
Sure, I had the privilege of reviewing the applications of these individuals in advance of this meeting. Everyone who is present had outstanding credentials, background, and exhibited a commitment to being willing to serve in these offices. And so based on that, I make my motion.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, if you would please unmute. All those in favor of the board and commission appointments as stated, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. The motion passes unanimously, and we share our appreciation to those individuals who have committed to serving on our boards and commissions. Sean, do we have any agenda modifications this evening?
No, Your Honor.
Right. Public participation. This is the Auburn, uh, let's see, where are we here? The Auburn City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, February 7th, 2022 at 7:00 PM will be held virtually and in person. And those in the room are here, and hopefully those on the call or have logged in. We have two attendees this evening. There is also, oh, and Emanuel is and Kent are both on as attendees, so thank you very much to both of them as they were just appointed to boards and commissions. All right, moving to public hearing and citizen input. We are moving on to citizen input, public hearings, and correspondence. We have no public hearings this evening. And so we will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. The public can participate in person or submit written comment in advance. Participants can submit written comments via mail, fax, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 5:00 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting and must be 350 words or less. Please mail comments to City of Auburn, Attention Sean Campbell, City Clerk, 25 West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, 98001. Fax comments to Attention Sean Campbell, City Clerk, at 253-804-3116, or email to publiccomment@auburnwa.gov. All right, Sean, did we receive any written comment?
No, Your Honor.
All right, we will move to comment for those in council chambers. When you come forward to speak, if you would please give your name and address for the record, and Sean will be using the clock that will allow you three minutes' time to speak. So we ask that you keep it within those three minutes. We will ask you to wrap up if you go past those three minutes. All right, first this evening, if you would please move forward to the to the surface so that yes, back there. So please give your name and address for the record. And then Sean will start the clock for you.
Koha D. Rowan, 31516, 44th Ave., South, Auburn, Washington, 98001.
And if you could speak up just a little bit, I'm not sure that we're able to hear you very well, and I apologize for that, but just to make sure that you speak up. That's, yeah, while you're back there for the public comment, that's fine.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Cedric Hoona Koa D. Rowan, but I go by Koa. I'm here to talk about RCP. I'm Native Hawaiian, and I work as a youth organizer at the Pacific Islander Community Association over in Federal Way. We are a restorative justice youth program that is part of RCP, and I work with my peers who are systems involved that live in Federal Way, Auburn, Renton, and Kent. We help mentors, support, and provide healing and hopeful space with our youth through programming that honors them and their lived experiences. I'm speaking to address the statements of South King County mayors who are supporting restorative justice programs, and instead we're recommending that we continue to lock up youth. I wanted to know why you didn't research or reach out to gain any type of knowledge about this topic before going public with it. I don't believe any of my peers deserve to be locked up in a cage to show them accountability. If you have children, I wouldn't wish that upon them as well. Youth just need the help, need the help and guidance, and as the mayor, you should be more concerned about funding these programs instead of recommending jail time for youth in Auburn. If Auburn is serious about stopping youth from getting into trouble, I suggest you follow the country's lead, the county's lead, and have the city fund youth restorative justice programs. Without any restorative justice programs for youth in Auburn, you're letting jails be the only solution. As the mayor and City Council, it is your job to represent us and help us when we're down. How about instead of making political statements on the media, we focus on helping us young people here in Auburn? We are your future. If we had your help and your funds, then we wouldn't have to be standing here in front of you today. At our office alone, our organization offers rental assistance, the COVID vaccine, and booster shots. We also use the funding from RCP to support the youth that we work with, either helping them get the driver's license, food, hygiene supplies, and just taking the necessary steps to help them stay on track. So please partner with us, fund restorative justice youth programs, and join in believing that youth are not meant to be locked up and celebrated and supported with all the resources that we can provide for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Sean, if you could reset the clock. Thank you. Yeah.
Yowei, and hello, Mayor, City Council members, and everyone. My name is Kelsey Mon. I am from the Marshall Island, where I grew up around my beloved culture before I moved here to Auburn, Washington. I am one of the youth organizer.
I'm sorry, can I ask you to give your name and address for the record first? Sorry.
Kelsey Mon, 2960 M Street, Southeast, Auburn, Washington, 98002.
Thank you.
Yowei, and hello, Mayor, City Council member, and everyone. My name is Kelsey Mon. I am from the I am from Auburn, I am from the Marshall Island where I grew up around my beloved culture before I moved here to Auburn, Washington. I am one of the youth organizer at the Pacific Islander Community Association of Washington. I am here today to speak about our restorative justice program on behalf of our youth leadership program, which we call the Pacifica Wayfinders. Instead of speaking out against restorative justice practices, I want you to listen to how how these practices have impacted our own community, your own community, in a positive way. The Pacifica, the Wayfinders is a program that creates an opportunity for young people to be a part of something good such as learning about each other cultures. This gives us a better understanding of our people and what we need as a community. We also have the opportunity to build with our youth academically. We offer a study table where we have tutors come into our office and work with our youth. With that being said, there are plenty more programs that the Wayfinders has to offer for our youth. Instead of them being sent to youth jail, where I believe they won't improve their behavior. Seeing these youth improving at school has been a pleasure of mine. Our mission is to help and provide young people and their families to meet their goal. I believe that through this community-led restorative process, both survivors and harmers have a voice in their healing practice. And young people have an opportunity to acknowledge the harm they have caused and make amends without being pushed into the juvenile's legal system where they are accountable to no one. Restorative justice programs like Wayfinders protect our youth and serve them with open arms and provide them with a loving space of support. Do not support policies that increase policing and demonize diversion program in the youth who go through it. I don't want to live in a city that supports policy that is rooted in the oppression of my Marshallis people. I hope you, our mayor, come alongside us, Auburn youth. Please come, please set aside city resources to fund program and our Pacifica Wayfinder program. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please remember to give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hello everyone, my name is RP Lalimo. I live in 3711 South 253rd Road Place, Kent, Washington, and the zip code is 98032. Um, hello, Yowei, Mayor and City Councils. Everyone, my name is RP Lalimo, as you can see. I'm a Marshallis born here in the US and currently living here in Washington. I'm a wayfinder, and I'm on board on the youth council member, and also as well as a client. I've received many and plenty of help here in the youth organization, such as helping out with schools, you know, getting my driver's license, providing me with new clothes, hygiene products, and things I needed in this program. Me being in this program kept me away from all these bad things, helped me out with my stress, helped me out with all these, you know, anxiety attacks. Kept me busy, kept me, you know, doing things that I never thought I would be doing. Kept me away from gang violence, drugs, alcohol, and all these other bad things. Well, besides that, I just wanted to ask, why aren't you guys providing funds for this program? As you heard, how they can help me in so many ways. I know that if you guys help fund this program, it'll be able to help other people too. But if you guys don't, I don't think it'll be able to help other kids just like me along the way. As a mayor and a city council, isn't it your job to help out the people? If y'all just push this to the side or don't even try to help out, how can we become better? Not just right now, but in the future. Helping out these youths, helping out these youths that need help will benefit us in the future. In the future, those people who need to, who are supposed to be in juvie could become people who, you know, work in offices, work in better environments, amazing environments, or, you know, just get out of their, you know, personal struggles, you know. What am I, what do you mean, what do I mean by that, you might ask? Well, I just see some of us youths don't grow up in a rich and healthy environment. In fact, some of us live in the ghetto, or some of us don't live with our parents, or just struggle in that place. Some of us, some of us youths are even born in gangs, and sometimes it's hard to find a way out of this struggle. But with this program, it's another shot in life. It's another chance to get out of that struggle. But if you don't help this program, imagine the future potential that will be wasted. You think that would be helping out the city? You think that will benefit the future? I believe everyone in life deserves a second chance. The reason why I say this because we don't know what's going on in the background. We don't know why they made that mistake. We don't know what made them react like that. We don't know, we don't see what made them react like that. But, you know, as you've heard, I'm gonna ask you, Mayor and City Council, you know what they done to me, and you know what they can do to others. But I'm gonna ask you guys right now, what are you guys gonna do about it? How are you guys gonna help out? And that's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please go right ahead.
I'm Joseph here. I actually don't live in Auburn, but I run an organization that provides support for civic owners that do live in Auburn. And so I just wanna thank the mayor for taking the time last week to meet with our young people. But we also wanted to provide space for young people to come and be able to attend a city council and to know what it means for them to have their voices be heard, and also to, you know, if they disagree with an issue, that they are able to come and do it in a way that's helpful, right? And so I'm just really proud of our young people for taking those steps into, you know, exercising their civic practice and civic voice. And so, you know, I just call on Auburn City Council and Mayor to, you know, restorative justice programs are, you know, the new thing. You know, we're reducing youth violence all across the country, and it's because restorative justice programs actually heal. And, you know, I think the old strategy of locking people up in cages has to just not be how we equate accountability. Accountability is actually centered in love. And if you want accountability, you have to create programs and spaces that actually center those values. And that's how true healing is arrived at with our young people, especially our young people that are often in households that, you know, have 50% poverty rates, especially in Auburn. And so we just want to be able to provide additional supports for some of us that weren't born in, with resources and with privilege, and that's what we do. And so, yes, for the mayor and the city council to continue to support programs like ours, programs that are rooted in restorative justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Virginia Haugen, 2503 R Street, Southeast, Auburn. Twice, I was on the city council in Auburn, a total of six years on this council. And one of the things that our mayor's mentor, I believe Jean Barbara, and I most appreciated was audience participation when citizens here in Auburn had an opportunity to come and speak to the council and to the mayor. I am bothered by the fact that there is a council member newly elected that I have never met. She is not in this room tonight. Our council members are not in the room. We are so far from the mayor's dais that, though I'm hard of hearing, I admit a little bit, it's very difficult to even hear what's being said in the front of the room. That these young people have come here tonight to talk about an important issue. An issue that has affected young people that I know in Auburn. If you think having a boxer in the family who gets to be on TV means that everything is a bed of roses in my family, think again. I know of the hardships of being a young person, not having experience, not having the kind of mentorship that you need. And as a city, we need to mentor all of our children, not just the privileged few. I would also like to say that we have a city clerk. And when you get trained by Sean, our city clerk, you know what you're doing, and you can move on to a different job. If you're needed at a different apartment, you can move to that job. I cannot say, I've said this before, I cannot say enough about our clerk's office and the job that they do for people in Auburn, because I get to watch it right out there. And yes, I have a medical exemption. I do not have my letter with me, and I apologize. But when Sean has her mask on, then I need to wear my mask. And if anyone in this room is offended that I have not had my mask on during the whole meeting, I apologize. And I thank you, young people, for coming. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We will move on to, actually, we have no correspondence this evening, correct? So we will move to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council, if any. We currently have finance ad hoc committee chaired by Councilmember Baggett. If you have a report, Councilmember. I see that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The council ad hoc finance committee, consisting of Councilmember Baldwin and myself, reviewed approximately 50 pages of 2022 claims vouchers totaling $4.3 million dated February 7th, 2022, for approval. The committee also reviewed payroll vouchers for the period January 12th through February 2nd, I believe, in the total amount of $2.8 million. No questions were required of the finance department. And upon completion of our review, the committee recommends council approval of these vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. Mayor? I think you're on mute. I can't hear what you're saying. I, thank you. I just wanted to let some of the speakers before they left this evening know how much I appreciated the time that they were willing to spend with me last week to let me know more about the program. As we mentioned, you have nothing to do with which offenses are included in the restorative community pathways. That is an issue that we did take up later in the day with the prosecutor's office. But I just want you to know how much I appreciate the work that you are doing. And as I mentioned during our call, there are funding opportunities. It is a cycle, so we can't just say, here's money for you. There is an application process, but I definitely encourage you when those notices go out, and I will try my best to remember to provide you with that information as well so that you can apply for those funds. As I mentioned, we have a large Pacific Island population, as many of you know, in the city of Auburn. And we also have the Blue Ribbon Committee, which is to make Auburn the healthiest city in the state. And that's not just physical health, that's mental health, that's community health. And so I would love to get you in contact. Pat Bailey is the person who organizes that. In fact, Councilmember Baggett and Councilmember Trout Manuel also serve on that committee. So I would love to get you connected with them as well, so you can hear all of the things going on in our community for everyone. All right. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I know it's not easy sometimes speaking publicly. I think you did a fabulous job, and I want to appreciate and let you know how much I appreciate the work that you're doing for people of our community. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Sterns, we usually don't have council comments at this point in time, but if you have a question?
Um, yeah, I wanted to catch them before they left.
Uh, no, they are gone, sorry. Did you have a question or something that I can, maybe we can?
You could let the, well, I'll just reach out through Sean and get their contact information. I wanted to commend them for their courage. And I wanted to say that they're being heard, and I think that's important when they come to the council, that they, you know, just don't see our visages on the screen and not get a sense that we care. And I wanted to let them know that.
Thank you. I will pass that along to them as well. The organization is Pacific Island Community, Pacific Islander Community Association, PICA.org, I believe, and Joseph is the CEO of the organization. You can look that up online and get contact for them. Okay. All right, we will, and thank you for that. We will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda. We will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Jay Raj?
Thank you, your honor. I would like to make a motion for council to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second, council member Baggett?
I'll second that, your honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Jay Raj?
Thank you, your honor. The consent agenda consists of the minutes, claims, and payroll vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, if you would please unmute, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you. We have no unfinished business. We will move to resolutions. Resolution number 5645, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Auburn Area Chamber of Commerce for the purposes of providing tourism and marketing services. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Jay Raj?
Thank you, your honor. I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution 5645.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second? Councilmember Baldwin, if you could just wait to be called on, I think councilmember Brown, but anyway, you've got the second. Deputy Mayor Jay Raj?
Thank you, your honor. The resolution 5645 authorizes the mayor to enter into a three-year contract starting in 2022 to 2024 with the Auburn Area Chamber of Commerce for the purpose of providing tourism and marketing support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Looks like councilmember Sterns has stepped away. Councilmember Baldwin, did you have a question?
Just editing note.
An editing note.
On resolution 5645 exhibit A, there are two paragraphs that are duplicated between page one and two.
Okay, we will note that is a scribe nurse error, and it has no impact to the contract. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of resolution 5645, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Resolution number 5646, a resolution adopting the 2022 state legislative agenda. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Jay Raj?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 5646.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinga?
Your honor, I would like to second that motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Jay Raj?
Thank you, your honor. Each year, the city of Auburn processes several legislative priorities that will inform the city's position on upcoming bills with consideration during the regular state legislative session. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you, your honor. Pursuant to the conversation I started last week, I'd like to amend the resolution.
You would like, I'm sorry, you would like to what?
Amend the, I guess, do I amend the appendix? How do we do that?
What is it that you would like to amend, councilmember?
The issue I raised last, two weeks ago, and then sent around to the, to Antoine and to you. So it's to add in HB 1725, which would be a public safety issue. And that's to create an endangered missing person advisory designation for missing indigenous persons.
Councilmember Sterns, if you notice, the next item is resolution number 5647. It does just that.
Okay, my mistake. I stand corrected and stand down. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, if you would unmute, all those in favor of resolution number 5646, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Resolution number 5647, a resolution supporting legislation proposed in the Washington State Legislature relating to the creation of an endangered missing person advisory designation for missing indigenous persons. Councilmember Sterns, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, your honor. Thank you. I move to approve or adopt. Now I can't find resolution. Resolution number 5647.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett?
I'll second that, your honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you, your honor. I swear I'll get the hang of this one year. I apologize. At any rate, the legislation that the city would support is, would create an alert similar to the silver alert for vulnerable adults. This would be called Red Thunder. And it would broadcast information about missing indigenous people on highway signs, on radio, and through press releases. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? All right, he is seeing and hearing none. If you would please unmute, all those in favor of resolution number 5647, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right, we will move to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with deputy mayor Jay Raj.
Thank you, your honor. On January the 28th, I attended the SCA newly elected reception. We welcomed, I think, about a half a dozen newly elected council members from all over the city. But there's a total of 30 people that got newly elected. And we are going to continue providing resource, we're going to be the resource for them and answer questions for them. And one of the biggest things that we came out with, came out of that meeting was this OPMA. They were surprised by the OPMA rules. And so Deanna Dawson has arranged for a study session regarding the Jurassic Park rules and regulations for them. And they requested, as well as for the SCA to provide help in the sense of council members who are being around to answer questions for them. So that was it. It was a good session that we had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett?
Thank you, your honor. I only have one quick report. Last meeting of our regional transportation committee for King County resulted in the appointment of a new chair, Tony Trautner from Kent, and a vice chair, John Pascal from Kirkland. Most of what we reviewed here were the approvals by King County of the submittals by the caucus and by the committee in general of the strategic plan for our regional transit without, throughout the Puget Sound area. And this is a significant milestone for the people who use transit. And the system evaluation actually that was presented was a presentation on priorities to reduce crowding, improve reliability, service growth, and route productivity with explanation on what each meant. This is explained in our packet in detail that everyone received on the committee. And I wanted to express a thank you to our staff person, Cecile Malik. To, we owe a debt of gratitude for all of her hard work in preparing all of the notes that go along with our meeting and making recommendations from staff. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, mayor. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you, your honor. Just a couple of things. Just a pending meeting. I will be tomorrow, attend my orientation for the affordable housing committee and looking forward to that upcoming meeting later in the week. And then tomorrow, I'll be co-chairing the Ryanine meeting. And we'll spend a lot of time sort of mapping out the upcoming agenda for the year and also getting a report on the new loans levy developments, which is, for those of you who don't know, loans levy is just above on the Green River, just above the city of Auburn. And there's been a lot of work done to help make that part of the river way more habitable for salmon and a lot of success. So I'm really looking forward to that. And then last Thursday, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council Equity Advisory Committee. And I was appointed or elected the co-chair of that. And so we are still continuing to dig into the equity issues in the transportation plan and the housing plan. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Malinga?
Nothing to report tonight, your honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes, one quick item to report. I wanted to let the citizens of Auburn know that King County Metro is working on the Rapid Ride I line. And we're currently in a period of open comments that can be submitted to King County Metro about the location of the different stations. And this is a great opportunity for the community to submit feedback that could really help them with getting stations in places that make sense for those who use and ride on metro. So just real quick, website for that is rapidrideline.com. And that's out there. So open comment is from now, I believe, through February 20th. So you've got about 13 days to submit your feedback and spread the word. So thank you so much.
Thank you. A few items from my last few weeks. On January, let's see, 22nd, there were a couple of items. The 31st District Virtual Town Hall with Representatives Drew Stokesbury and Eric Robertson was from 10:30 to noon. It was a remote or a virtual event, and it was well-attended. Eric and Drew both talked about some of the items of legislate, pieces of legislation that they were supportive. They talked about the state finances. Several items came up. I do want you to know, council, that both representatives talked very favorably and supportive of the work that the city of Auburn has done on affordable housing and brought us up as shining examples of how to do that work. And so was very proud to be on the call, and I did thank them for their work and explained the city's position on the missing middle or housing on Senate Bill 5670 and the companion bill in the House 1782, which the Senate bill has now died in committee. All of the work is being done on House Bill 1782. Then later that evening, I had the wonderful opportunity, as did deputy mayor Jay Raj, to be at the Miss Auburn Scholarship Program and Miss Auburn's outstanding team. I was the emcee, and the deputy mayor was one of the judges for the evening. And I think you did a fabulous job. We have two wonderful new representatives. Miss Auburn is Carrie Everett, and Miss Auburn's outstanding team is Alexis Douglas. I would like to wish them both the best of success and look forward to working with them both in the upcoming year. The, during the week of the 23rd, we had opportunity to interview the candidates for the new CEO role of Greater Seattle Partners. We have been with an interim CEO for the last six months and want to say congratulations to Brian Serat, who was the successful candidate and will be on board with Greater Seattle Partners in the very near future. Brian is well-known in the area regarding economic development. And so he brings a great deal of knowledge about this region as well. So look forward to some great things from Brian and his team. We, on Monday, the 31st, we recorded our second podcast for That's So Auburn. And again, my guest was Kent Hay, so it was part two of our discussion on homelessness. We will have at least one more session coming up, and that is with some of the providers, service providers in our community. So I hope you will tune into those. What the goal is, is to make, make a comment that sometimes was used in a negative manner of That's So Auburn, turn it into something that is positive and unique for Auburn. So that's why we chose to take that saying back. As I mentioned, after public comment, Chief Kellier and I met with PICA, the Pacific Islanders Community Association, to talk about the restorative community pathways. As they mentioned, the mayors of South King County, Mayor Farrell of Federal Way, Mayor Ralph of Kent, Mayor Pavoni of Renton, and myself have come out with concerns over some of the felony offenses that were eligible for the restorative community pathways. We are firm believers in restorative justice. That was not the issue. It's just having some of the violent crimes listed as eligible for the program was of concern to us and that the program was rolled out with very little fanfare or very little discussion. Let's make it absent any discussion with the cities who are impacted by this the most. And so we did have a meeting later the same day with the King County Prosecutor's Office to continue the discussion on our concerns about how it was rolled out as well as what offenses are eligible. There will be more discussions to come. And then on Saturday, the 5th, there was another hearing down in the legislature. I testified again against the missing middle housing bill, number 1782. There was a presentation provided by the budget committee that of the 281 cities in the state of Washington, 240 of the cities would be eligible for this new law, this new unfunded mandate, if you will. And the estimate just for the assistance to change the comprehensive plans and put the correct language in there to all 240 cities over a four-year period of time was $55 million simply to change the language in the city's comprehensive plan when each of those cities' plans came due for revision. That has nothing to do with what the cost would be for some of the infrastructure that the city would have to provide as well as there is no guarantee that if this legislation were to pass, it would actually provide for missing middle-income housing. And so we asked that they hold the bill this session and work with the cities to come up with good, logical, thoughtful legislation next year that will actually accomplish what they want to accomplish. And with that, council, we And with that, Council, we do have need for a closed session. The City Council will adjourn into a closed session per RCW 42.30.140, Section 4B, for a discussion on collective bargaining for 30 minutes. City Attorney Como, Human Resources Director Martenson, Assistant Human Resources Director Barber, and Chief Callier, Chief of Police Callier, will be required to attend. There is anticipated action after the closed session. Council, I believe you do have a meeting notice to be able to go into that meeting. So you will need to leave this one, but make sure you still have the link to get back because we will be coming back to this, to this meeting after our closed session. And we will adjourn to closed session.
I already had your opinion on the housing thing. Thanks so much for addressing it, Nancy. Really appreciate you for it.
Thank you, Virginia.
Did you say you are for me then?
Yes, we are.
Deputy Mayor Jay Raj, can you please log out of this meeting?
All right, we will call the city council meeting back to order. We do have one more item of business this evening. And that is resolution number 5650, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Auburn and the Auburn Police Sergeants Association for 2022 through 2024. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor DeCourse, I did it again, Deputy Mayor J Raj. It just kind of rolls off the tongue after two years. Sorry about that.
That's not a problem. Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt, well, for the council to adopt resolution number 5650.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor J Raj. See, I did that one without even thinking.
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor. This approves the APD Sergeants 2022 to 2024 collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Seeing and hearing then, if you would please unmute. All those in favor of resolution number 5650, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. Right, we have no other business before us this evening. So council, thank you very much and for working through all of the tech, tech issues this evening, in no part the responsibility